My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation, under God, in the visible liberty and justice of all. If we could remain standing as we always do and remember our men and women in the armed forces, and also Lillian Odell. Some of you might know her as Pinky. She passed. Thank you. Lovely comment on agenda items. Yes?
I don't really have any idea. I hope that folks feel a little good. It's not too simple doing the agenda item. But at the ripe old age of thirty-nine, applying to my over two old. You're going to be cutting trees and cutting trees, especially on the West Point side of Red Lake. I want to thank the board and DPW. A member of our DPW who was probably thinking about my age of thirty-nine was on that bank cutting down the trees.
Thanks. And we had talked about this and I did pass it on. Like I made a note to hang up.
He did a great job and he was very precarious place on that wall. I also wanted to thank Mary Jane for writing a complete list of our elected officials.
She summed, she summed.
I told her you gave it to me.
Pat Ryan's office did get back to me today. It's the only one so far. And Pat Jane just told me, they told me the same thing they told her a month ago. But for what it's worth, the post office is not closing, but they said it would be four to six weeks before it opens.
Thank you.
And my last item is...
So far, none of this is on the agenda.
Well...
It's okay. I don't care.
I go by the charging station almost on a daily basis. Let's just charge a buck, a quill, one hour and get it done.
I'm gonna let Jimmy address that right now.
Oh, great.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so I was looking at some things about the charging station. And what I'm gonna propose, and obviously it's a board decision, but I'm looking at charging... It's a two-way thing here. I want to do forty cents per kilowatt hour, which many other places do. And then after four hours, because people leave their park all night and they want to already be charged, and they're taking away from some other cars that they want to charge or even during the day. After that, I'd like to apply another dollar per hour. So I want that, for the board to take a look at that. I got some information that they need. Or they can do their own research and come back with other numbers. But I think that's fair. And I know there's one other question about some other people that are charging out there that we're gonna address a little later on.
Jim, could you throw something in writing because of the next meeting?
Yes.
So I'm gonna move on.
Right.
Because it's in too long.
Yeah, it's gonna be in the fee schedule, I think, too. So we're gonna have to do something in a month now.
Can I ask something about that? This is the first time I'm hearing about it. About two months ago, I actually talked about an EV charger that EV chargers still pay someone's that are there, where you are charging people and they're gonna give you ten percent of whatever the profit is that they're getting. They're gonna install the chargers, they're gonna charge people from charging there, and they're gonna give the village ten percent of their profit. And that went through multiple village board meetings and a lot of things with a contract attached in the town. So how is this different? Who's gonna be putting this charging station as a company?
No, these are the Charge Point stations that are already there. Charge Point already does this in other locations.
So they're going to...
They just have to program it into the machines that are there. It's not a difficult task.
So no cost to us?
No.
Okay. Are we getting any profits from what they're doing?
Well, we have to pay for the machines first and then maintenance, upkeep, et cetera, et cetera, and the bill for the electric. I don't think we should be in the business of making money on charging someone's car.
Well, I don't think, well, we're not in the business of making money charging from somebody else. They're using our facility. And the Greenpoint was going to put the chargers there at their expense. So are you saying that the villagers are gonna pay for this setup?
The villagers, no, the villagers don't pay for anything. The setup's already there.
I thought you just said...
The setup's already there.
Okay, so you're not paying them?
We just have to, we have to just get Charge Point to implement how much per kilowatt hours. And then after four hours, a dollar there.
Well, that's what you're saying, so we're just repeating yourself. Okay, so what you're saying is that the charging station actually exists there. They're going to modify themselves without any more cost to the villagers. And this is different from what Polga, the environmental director, had proposed to us in a different company. But for some reason, it was her idea and I had brought it up and it never came to fruition. It was really a good deal for the villagers. Somebody was gonna come in and that's what they're doing for towns. And you get ten percent for them being in your...
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
So I just wanna know how this is different from that?
Melanie, let me answer, let me answer something.
Yeah.
And I wrote it down already and I'll have the information to you. So we had given all that paperwork from this other company to our attorney. Because there was legal papers that they were asking me to sign. And I can't remember, but there were reasons why not to go to this other company. What's the other company's name? Is it New San...
Uh, I think it was Greenpoint.
Greenpoint, and this one's Charge Point. Okay, I'll get back to you about Greenpoint, but there's four, there's a little bit more.
Well, I saw all that email string and it was very, very picky. I mean, it was just really very...
Well, you say picky. I mean, it's the attorney giving us that picky stuff that we should pay attention to.
Well, it's the same attorney who also writes your letters to the editor and your emails for your... So she does whatever we tell her to do, or you tell her to do, I guess. But okay, I gotta bend the principle.
No, 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 you, 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 listen, I didn't want tonight's meeting to be like this. I told you before we started, I don't feel good. I could walk out that door right now, it wouldn't bother me. Okay, 'cause I don't feel good. But don't say those, I don't know why you do this. Don't say, wait a minute, let me talk. Can I talk? Don't say those comments. Don't say those comments.
The attorney gets paid two hundred dollars an hour. She shouldn't be a stupid...
And she doesn't, the village attorney works for the village.
That's right.
Not me, not you. And any of us up here can call her five times a day. Five times a day. That's what she gets a retainer for. So please, I don't know why it has to go this way every single meeting for two and a half years.
The attorney is appointed by the mayor.
You, you have, I gave you the information, I gave you the information on Greenpoint. Then let's, then let's just say...
Alright, thank you. Thank you for explaining it. Thank you.
Here, well.
I apologize.
Okay, huh?
I apologize.
It's not your fault. No, it's not your fault. It's not your fault. Yes.
Sorry about the creek.
That's the first time I remember.
Michael Joyce, member of the village, proud member of the village. I was just looking at the minutes tonight. And... Or not. I'm gonna go to Mr. Salvo.
No, all questions are, all questions that we adopted five to zero are addressed to the board. I have them here. We did that months ago.
Well, I understand, but he seems to be the figures man. He has the numbers. Yeah, so, so we're looking for another billion and a half for the storm and the water because of the storm.
No, no.
But it's a question, you know. Wasn't there something less, what's meaning to do with water or storm like a problem?
That's right. You're, you're, because you don't know, the way you present the question is incorrect.
But no, but I'm leading it into my question.
Oh, it's not a question. No, it's a question.
So we're looking for a million and a half. But I remember a couple of months ago when the whole thing about, you know, trying to save money and this and that. First thing, Salvo said, well, we had excess in the water, we have a billion reserve in the water, we have a billion reserve in the sewer, and we have a billion reserve in like a joint kitty thing.
I don't know anything about that. Don't shake your head. I don't know anything about that. When I start.
It's under a variety. So why, so we have, we have a billion in the sewer and we have a billion in the water. So that's two million. I mean, I might have wrote figures. Well, we're looking for a million and a half, but we already have two million. So why, why are we putting some more burden on the taxpayers of the village of Highland Falls? Thank you.
So I'm not really sure where the...
Jimmy, loud. I want the public to hear.
I'm not really sure where the question was. It seemed like we were just...
No, the question, the question...
Whoa, 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 let me finish. I'm not really sure where the question was, because all we are doing tonight in the newspaper, there was an error in the newspaper and it said water twice. Instead of water, one point five for water, one point five for sewer. We are not looking for an additional one point five. It's just the original one point five that we passed with a correction for sewer. So we have one for water, one for sewer, one for general. There's not an additional eight and five.
My, my question to you was being the money man. Was that we have a million in sewer, this was like probably months ago. Million in water, and a one million, one million, that's two million. By type of mathematics. So why are we looking for this million and a half when we have two million in reserve?
Because, my friend, this is from the damage from the flood. It's gonna be more than probably this, but this is going to be our shit. Hopefully, when your federal representatives get out their checkbooks and send us... Well, I don't know. Sometimes they don't reply to emails. So when they finally get their checkbooks out, they'll cover the rest. So this is to get, what we have to get done. Roughly thirty-six million dollars, my friend.
This is not new bond.
So where, where are the two million that's here and here and this other kitty? What's, what's that money doing?
I'm not sure what you're asking. What do you mean, what's the difference?
Oh, you said you had a million in the water.
Yeah, I keep saying what I said. I said roughly a million. I didn't exactly give you my...
Roughly, that is probably where the money is.
Yeah, I'm in, Jim.
Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, I'm good. So... Where is it? It's there.
What happened? Nobody came and took my...
My, first of all, my, first of all, you can't take water, you can't take money from water and put it to sewer. You can't take sewer money and put it, that's illegal. So just, that's a little, little piece to...
Either separate bills.
Right, right, right. But if, but if there was excess in the first place, why wasn't it given it back to relieve the taxpayers of Highland Falls and not put it on water and sewer?
This is a very simple question.
Michael, wait a minute, Melanie. He just declared me the money man. I'm the answer.
I know, you're so...
We use, we use some cash for the project that we have going on down there. We've used some cash for upgrades at the plant. We still have reserve accounts up there, but you're not gonna use all your cash in one shot. We are going through, this million and a half is related directly from the flood. Michael, you know this. You've come to meetings and asked every single time.
I checked, I checked.
You guys meet on a regular basis and talk about it. Like, what are we doing?
I checked up on things to have a reserve, to have a reserve anyway in the water and sewer is illegal.
We do have a reserve.
You're supposed to pass it back to the taxpayer or settle a fund, especially...
You're wrong. You're wrong. I'm sorry. You can have a reserve in water and you can have a reserve in sewer. It's inaccurate what you're saying.
You are not wrong.
A surplus. I mean surplus, sorry.
Surplus is what he's talking about.
Who's talking, Mike? Are you talking or is it...
No, no, no.
No, I'm talking now. Now I'm talking. Okay? Because your answer is nothing but misinformation. You have given the people the idea that we have all this surplus in the sewer department, one million dollars. In the water department, one million dollars. In the general fund, a surplus of one million dollars. But the simple truth is, there is no extra money. There is no surplus, okay? Maybe it is in the books, but it's a shell game. That's why he called it a shell game, alright? A shell game a year ago. Mr. Salvo has been misleading you about our financial situation, okay? And he disapproves of me being straightforward, okay? And telling you and being realistic and...
Melanie, you're not being straightforward.
He says that I, I spend...
You're not being straightforward. You are. You are the queen of the world.
Well, listen, no, no, well, I earn my living being honest, okay? I'm not gonna tell you you're well, but I know that well that you're sick, okay? If you're sick, I'm gonna tell you that there's something wrong and I'm gonna offer you a solution. And this is what I'm trying to do, okay?
Melanie, you offer no solutions.
I'm not a career politician.
You're a war monger in every single meeting.
I'm not a career politician. I don't spend my time here.
I don't make a living on being a village trustee.
You need to stop talking what I'm talking.
No, you corrupt everyone.
Alright, here's what I'm gonna do. Here's what I'm gonna do.
No, you corrupt everyone.
Wait, sorry, here's what I'm gonna do. Mike, you asked your question. You got an answer and an answer. I don't know what to tell you from here, but I'm gonna move on, because I, you know, this is not gonna go anywhere. It's embarrassing, actually. Go ahead. Who's that, Ed? You have a comment here, Ed?
Definitely do.
Okay.
Number one, one subject for water. I recently filled my hot tub up with water. Put filter gun, it's hooked for eleven hundred gallons. So you guys can look at it, you can just look at it and pass it down. This water's coming out of my faucet.
Yeah.
Had to include filter, because one was just capable of handling eleven hundred gallons, one for upon five hundred gallons. On the inside of that filter, it's coming out of my pipe. Alright, so that's, everybody, I'm, as we're done, I live in Braxton and we're looking for water, looking for the water pipe.
And you know that, and you know that that's the plant?
I know, I know all about the plant. I mean, you jump over nice enough and take the balls from my pipe, they go up. You know, the water plant, I don't know if you ran that line or not. But the fact of the matter is, I don't need anybody to tell me if you have a two-inch line that's galvanized and is full of rust. I've known that since nineteen eighty-five on one house. What we need is that. Alright, that's enough of that. Another topic. Housing projects to come before Orange County IDA.
Hey, that's not, hey, that's not where we're at on the agenda at all. This is on agenda items.
Okay.
But you'll have the time at the end to talk about everything you want.
Alright, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for being, I have a whole house water filter, okay? That I have to change every three months because it turns mud brown, okay? It was destroying our tankless water heaters, okay? So that's exactly right. You're not the only person with that problem. I have on Main Street, I have that problem. People who live on, and behind me have that same problem. It costs so much money, okay?
Everybody knows we have the problem. What I wanna know is about the solution.
The solution is...
Just opened bids the other day. You know, you know the process. We just opened bids the other day for one of us.
I thought we did that like two months ago.
We did it last, a few days ago.
And the water line project is...
On New York Park, Braxton.
What?
On New York Park.
In Braxton.
In Braxton.
Okay.
I thought you knew that, but that's okay.
Well, I thought it was up, it was a couple of months ago.
No, just opened it up the other day. I think ten o'clock Thursday morning.
It's out for bid?
No, it's in.
Oh, that is it. Okay, so that's only at least a three point six million dollar one.
Okay, but I'll do my, I'll do my...
Whatever it is, I'll do my hour tomorrow.
Okay, let me continue. Next on the agenda is bills and claims for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, three hundred and three thousand, one hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty... Three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars is thirty-six cents. Can I have a motion? Some of those bills are for work that's being done inside on New York Park.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melanie. All in favor?
Yes.
Close. Can we approve the meeting, the minutes from the last meeting on August twenty-one, twenty twenty-three?
Motion.
Motion by Melanie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. All in favor?
Yes.
Close.
Motion care.
We have priority officer in charge of the police department, Jason Torpey, to release our part-time dispatcher, Eric Apazo, from probation employment with the Village of Highland Falls as he does not have the availability to work.
Motion.
Motion by Melanie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor?
I...
Yes.
Close.
Motion care.
Next, we have a bond resolution for the Village of Highland Falls, New York, authorizing the issuance of bonds in a principal amount not to exceed one point five million to finance construction of improvements to the village waste order slash sewer system in connection with damage caused by excessive floodwater resulting from the July ninth, twenty twenty-three storm event, stating that the estimate maximum cost thereof of one point five million and appropriating said amount for such purposes. And yes, we did do this a meeting or two ago, and yes, it was posted in the news at the Highlands incorrectly, and that's why we have to do this. They had water and water, it should have been water and wastewater. So the wastewater got mixed up with the water. This is just a way to correct it. It's not an additional money we're borrowing. It's what we talked about originally. It's just streaking out the paperwork. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, ma'am. Second.
Second.
Second by Gary. Ma'am, roll call.
Presti Guerrero?
Yes.
Presti Ramus?
Yes.
Presti Phillips?
Yes.
Presti Salvo?
Yes.
Mayor Denario?
Yes, motion, Gary. Thank you so much. I'd like you all to approve the Highland Falls parent-teacher council for James Ionia High School to hold upcoming parade on Wednesday, October the eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The parade will step off at five P M. From Buffalo Soldiers Field parking lot in West Point and head down Main Street to Highland Falls Lot Two. The insurance is here and everything's doing.
Motion.
Motion by Gary. Is there a second? Second by Melanie. All in favor?
Yes, yes.
Close.
Motion care.
Next, a regret here, that letter to inform you, the village board, of my retirement as a chief water plant operator. Last day will be Friday, the fifteenth of September, twenty twenty-three. It has been a great pleasure over the twenty, past twenty-eight years to work alongside many great individuals in the water, sewer, DPW department, and village hall. I wish the Village of Highland Falls nothing but the best in the future. And we accept this with regret.
Yes, sir.
Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor?
Yes.
Close. Motion care.
Can I ask though what happens?
We have, we have, we have two operators with licenses. We have two licenses up there now, which is what Orange County requires. We have placed an ad in the, out in the public for a chief water plant operator. We are getting several resumes in and the deadline, Laney, is when?
I think this one is...
I can't hear you.
September twenty-ninth.
September twenty-ninth, so after the twenty-ninth, we'll look at what came in and I'll set up a review panel of the resumes and we can start interviews.
So we have to, you know, the last time when we had the license, we had to pay the company two thousand dollars for that second license. If you don't have a supervisor in the water plant, we have to assign somebody.
No, we don't have to have that company or any other company.
So we don't need an add to it. We don't, I would ask that, you know, after the flood and everything, are we gonna ask the person that we're gonna hire, chief of the village?
If you want that as a requirement, you can propose it. You're not gonna, your pickings aren't gonna be good.
Or at least with, with a twenty minute...
Let's see, yeah, some of them are that, that close, you must say.
Yeah.
A couple of my son, yeah.
Okay.
Public comment. Ed?
Anyway, I received this today. It's from the IDA of Orange County. And what we're looking to do is we're looking to make low-income housing and basically in Highland Falls. And I believe in, uh... Warwick?
Walk, uh, uh, Walko.
Walko.
Not a walko.
Yeah, and hey, I'd like to know if this comes before the board and it's voted on and if there's a referendum on it. Because I don't think we need anybody here to pay, uh, to pay, payment in lieu of taxes. When our taxes are constantly going up, these people are gonna be using services. And if they're at the board, they're not gonna be buying anything in Highland Falls.
In other words, that is important, what you're saying.
Well, okay, this is, let me hear, hear me out. My personal feeling are we don't need any more low-income housing in Highland Falls.
I don't know that any is coming.
Well...
No, I, I got it too. I got the same text message.
Is it right there?
No, and so I called the director. He was away on vacation. But the, the article in the paper, not the paper, the Mid Hudson News was, was just horrible. So it freaked me out too, so I called him and he called me today around four fifteen. And it's, it's for wine green apartments that are already, not apartments, wine green that is already here. And it's for like the one-third of the area that was damaged. They're just looking for, they're looking for, they're going to them to rebuild that section. They're not adding any additional.
I want it said here.
No. No, no, I know. Well, it says nothing in that article if it's the same one I have.
It says here they want to build low-income housing.
Right, it's not any, not any additional. It's exactly what's down there. They're just replacing the third that's lost.
We don't need any more tax.
No, exactly. So I called right away today and I got literally a call back around four fifteen. It's not anything new. It's to replace what was, what was lost.
I think, but I think, Ed, your point taken, right? Your point is, you know, in wine green, there are fifty-two low-income housing units. Plus, we have another, what, sixty-something, uh, uh, how is that? The most...
Section eight.
Section eight housing within this one thousand, one hundred household, one square mile village. So I think your point is we don't need any more low-income housing. What we need is a change in the density, uh, in the business zone, a change in, you know, attracting businesses here, a change in attracting more residents here so that they can actually help us with the burden of taxes, right? That's what we need. What we need is good planning, a change in the zoning laws, you know, making the businesses actually thrive instead of what we have here right now, downtown, largely empty, abandoned buildings, okay? And we certainly don't need a business zone that goes all the way to nine W. We need to concentrate the business zone within the first half mile between the gate and Mountain Avenue, really. You know, so when this board changed the zoning rules so that it became businesses all the way to Main Street, all the way to nine W, including the Pellwood Lake area, all of that, we, does need to go back to residential. It just needs to go back to residential.
Place has been business for years.
Well, no, it's residential, non...
Sure, I worked in storm paint mowers down there. That's a business.
Yeah.
Nicole's restaurant used to be there where the church is right now. That was a business. You got a hotel there now. That was a business. And you got another hotel there, which is also good.
Well, it's now a church, so we get no revenue from that, right?
If I go from her, from her, from her...
And the other thing is that it was a business. It was a business, but it was a residential, non-compliment. So I think the people in the Pellwood Lake area had a big fight about it many years ago, well before I was here. And they wanted to keep that as a residential area so that the businesses that's there now, they don't see it become a four-story, you know, business, right?
I understand.
So, but I think the business, we need to concentrate our businesses here in this area here and instead of diluting it across Main Street. That's why...
I understand everything you're saying. The fact of the matter of business doesn't matter as well as that of, for the, you know, for my life or what I can do.
Right.
Or constructive management.
And it's gonna stay like that.
Town barages, it used to be a four-story.
Yeah.
I mean, they do a business up and down Idaho. We need four businesses up and down Idaho.
Yeah, it's not, it's not working out, right? This means a lot of planning. This certainly, the downtown didn't become like that overnight. It had nothing to do with the flood.
No.
It has something to do with the way we have to attract the businesses here, the way we plan our community. Actually, you know, we're working on this comprehensive plan, which has been back and forth. Community leaders, we're one of them, right? Thirteen, eleven of you guys talked about it.
There's people that are already invested and they're sitting on it and doing nothing. One place looks like a brick and go-kart track out here, okay? The other place, the church is supposed to be a foreign restaurant. That's not going anywhere. The only thing that developer did was build a set staircase, a staircase in front of Sacred Heart Church. That's the only thing he accomplished, alright? All the rest of it's fluff and BS. Well, now you had a person that invested and I believe that you, the board, went out of your way so that this guy can actually build this thing. And now you got a couple houses on, Drew had me right out here. You go out here and take them right and look at the houses now. The signs are all torn off. That's part of his property. It's not maintained. It looks like crap. Alright, so now, this is something that you bent over backwards for to give this guy a good, a good leg up to get his business going. And what do we have? We have nothing, zero.
Okay, well, let me explain that.
No, don't explain it. Don't explain it. I know.
I'll explain it to the...
Big camp rent, although a whole, a whole room in a hotel there, he's not gonna build that.
I know, I have no ties with them, by the way, so I have no financial interest with them.
Is that right? Is that right?
Yes.
It is. It is right.
It has nothing, it has nothing to do with...
I'm sorry, Joe, are you implying that I have no financial interest with them?
No, I'm asking you, what you just, I'm asking you, what you just said is correct.
Yes.
You said yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I have no financial interest or business with them, so no.
I don't care about that. All I'm saying is that... All I'm saying is, that we, these projects are on the books.
That's right.
Okay, I'm planning for, we have approved, approved, almost approved site plan for this stuff.
That's right.
You see any, any steel here, you see any concrete going in the ground, you see anything torn, no?
Well, you see 70 million dollars come floating around in that tree?
All the infrastructure they say it's gonna do, none of that's being done.
That's right.
That stuff can all be done before you put a shovel in the ground.
That's right.
All right?
Yes, so I'm, I'm gonna explain this from my perspective. I, again, I have no business, uh, when we spent our money on our buildings, three of them, we made them look good, we have a fourth one, we're gonna make that look good, okay? So here's the thing, right? Money doesn't grow on trees, there was a series of them, and that's his excuse, okay? I understand it, right? And the other excuse, other than that, that was given, right? Other than what happened to the 70 million dollar investors that he had, who disappeared, because that was not his own money, that was investors that pleaded away. The second thing that he said is that parking was so prohibited, he just could not find any place to actually find parking for the first 70-something rooms that he was gonna create, and then for it to become a business without return on investment, became 100 rooms, then he even needed more parking, and he just couldn't find it. That's his reasoning to me, I've approached him already about that, I'm like, what are you doing? Why is this empty, right? No money is the number one reason.
Because put one more parking level underground, because put one more parking level underground, to have adequate parking for what he was doing, right?
Money, money.
I went over that with him when he, when he had money, okay?
He said, I shouldn't...
You know, there's answers to all these problems, they're all, oh, all these excuses, there's an answer, you got an excuse, there's an answer to it.
I know.
All you gotta do is sit down and figure it out.
And I can understand why he would be mad, an investor, that he's not doing anything about that, but, I mean, he can't come up with money, and what, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? He can't make them come, cop up money.
So, let me say this, and then I, I'm gonna move on, uh, uh, so I just heard something from Melanie, that Rick Manicosi, who owns, 86 grad, West Point, who owns his property, these two houses that are terrible, um, he has no money. When I met with him, I don't know, it doesn't matter, four or five weeks ago, at the Thayer Hotel, he told me, and these were his exact words, "I will not build until the Thayer Hotel bounces back to where it was pre-COVID." So that told me then you're not building. I didn't say that to him, but that's what I left, that's what he told me. So I don't know if it's no money, or it's the lack of business at the Thayer Hotel. I tell you what he is doing, though, that he's gonna be able to make some money. Of course, it hurts, whenever West Point does something, we get hurt. We all know there's food, there, there's places on Main Street that deliver. They count on it, they count on that money at night, that cadets spend. You'd be surprised, per week, how much the cadets spend. Years ago, I had a survey done, and West Point did it for over $20,000, I'm sure it's up to 30, but go with the 20 if you want. Guess who delivers now to cadets every night? Every half hour? Yes. Huh?
Hotel fare.
Thayer Hotel now delivers. Go figure. Okay, Mike, you're next.
You have one question, Tom? I just wanna...
It's not right. Talk about hurting Main Street, who's hurting Main Street? Who's the biggest person, who's the biggest, whatever you wanna call it, person, group, entity, who's hurting Main Street? I have my opinion.
You have a great, great...
Go ahead, Mike.
I've looked at my whole work.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I just wanna comment on something that was brought up that wasn't on the agenda. Trustee Ramus, the car chargers that we have in place right now, uh, you said that they have to be paid off?
No, they're free.
They're free?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so, so they're totally free?
Okay. That's when they were first put in? That was the game plan for X amount of time, and then we're gonna address it. But you want people to be green at that point in time, again?
Oh, no, no, there's no green, green is bright, I'm fine with it. I love green, which, how many times have you said, twenty-three years? My, my, my point is, uh, with the other company that would install free, the taxpayers of Highland Falls was gonna see revenue of 10% of the earnings. What did the company say to you that the taxpayers of Highland Falls would see from the revenues that this would generate?
I don't know how many cars are out there that are gonna be actually...
Well, the other company got 10%, so...
Well, the other company's no good, based on our lawyer's, um, information.
Let's wait, let's wait, let's wait till I get the information, that's what they're coming, why it wasn't good.
When the attorney's here, we can...
Then that's the exact, that is why that was not a good idea.
Now, if it is a good idea, I have no problem with Green Point putting him somewhere else, let him, and we can take revenue at that, at that point in time. But the attorney informed the board that it's not a good idea for the village. So let's find out what she has to say.
I heard that. Ron, what, I have to say in the middle of time. Uh, so, what I heard then, it's like, Ron, what you said, when you're giving your thing about machines have to be paid off, this has to be done, that has to be done, and it sounded like maybe the village would get something, but no, that, that they're gonna have their machines in the town, taking up two parking spots that were kinda talking about were short on already, and this company is going to reap the profits from that, and the villagers might not see any tax breaks at all, even 2%?
Who's gonna reap the benefits to?
This company has the charges.
They don't get any money.
The charges are already there. Thank, thank you.
Okay.
The charges are already there, there's two of them.
Yeah.
The only thing this is doing is we're coming up with a rate, no different than when you go down to the gas station, and it's $88 a gallon. If there's a charge per kilowatt hour, that's all we're doing, is putting something on there, the charges a kilowatt per hour. No, my question is, at what point, because this company is taking up two parking spots, and I understand green, I'm all, I'm all with green, I'm all with, at what point does the village see some recompense from this company? Besides us being all great, we love green, and it should be that way, because there is global warming, at what point will the village see some benefit from this, from this multi-billion company, I assume?
Well, the benefit is that...
I mean, in tax revenue, in tax relief, sorry.
So the benefit... Like, all we wanted to do, after a few months, I was able to get the, the Arjun Rockland bill for that pole which feeds those two chargers. And it was very interesting, you can see during, during the year and a half, two years of COVID, it dropped dramatically, but it's a, I don't have it in front of me, but it's a thousand a month, a little more than a thousand, a little less than a thousand, and that's when we decided we need to, at least for even here. I'm glad people have, whatever they call them, green cars, electric cars, whatever, whatever it is, but, but it's not my, I don't, I don't think it's government's responsibility to pay you charger park, so all we want to do is to pay, you pay what it, you pay something, so that we don't get, so that you don't pay the electric bill. That's what we're trying to do.
We agree with that.
I, 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 I agree wholeheartedly with that.
I mean, the two spaces, they have to be put somewhere. Olga Anderson, and I agreed, I met with her, was talking about taking two spaces behind Town Hall, so you're gonna take spaces...
Until, until we hear from the lawyer, about why this company right now is going with, but this other company is gonna put in their units free, and then give back to the village 10%. And Olga was in charge of this, and she's an intelligent woman, she would look at all the Ts, cross them, all the Is, dot them, she would make sure that this was a plus-plus for the village.
So you asked me how much we were gonna make on charge point, so I'll ask you the question. How much of this 10% can be? Do you have an idea? No, we don't, because we don't have any cars in there. And the benefit of having charge point, Green Point, whatever charge stations are out there, is that people have to charge their cars to have these electric cars. Now, am I in favor of them? They use fossil fuel to get the electric, but whatever, that's a whole nother animal. But they do have to charge their cars. That brings them into the village, and hopefully they have time to get out and not only visit the museum, which is right across the street, but the businesses on me, it's a plus for the village to have them there. If you're concerned about parking, you're saying we don't have parking?
No, 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 no.
No, you said we don't have parking.
No, I said, I brought up parking, I brought up...
You said this, don't...
No, I brought up the fact of parking, because with the development that was being talked about, parking was bought up. That's still a huge wipeout, so parking in this village is an asset. It's not something to be given away, that can bring a return to alleviate the tax...
Okay.
I love, I love your point on that, you know why? Because right now, businesses, low, higher density, with no required parking, is gonna turn into low-income housing with no parking required, all right? And now everybody will be parking in these lots, that's something that we must address. If we go with higher density in the village, and right now, in this business district, they are exempt from parking, what's gonna happen is, you're not gonna have any parking on the side streets or the lots. So parking, yes, is a big issue, that's the main issue that we need to address. And as far as the gentleman up here, there were many different scenarios that were given to him.
But you're getting away from the point, sorry.
He could, he...
You're getting off, you're getting off...
No, you said, everybody's saying that he...
No, no, you're getting off target, I'm saying, this company is gonna reap the benefits of putting in two chargers, what will the taxpayer return from this station?
Okay, thanks, that, no, no, please.
So, so back up to, so back up to this gentleman's, uh, point up here, that you were all talking about, and that I wanted to address, is he came to the planning boys with many different options. He chose to go with a building that did not fit that particular lot, he bought seven lots, he could have changed the design, Mr. Dunne even said so, he could have changed the design, he didn't need to go look for parking, he was trying every way but loose. He wanted to buy, he bought the buildings down on the other end of Main Street, he was gonna have valet, valets bringing parking, uh, parking cars down there, they're walking back. He came up with so many scenarios, instead of just changing his design. He could have changed the design, he could have bought...
What has that got to do with the chargers that we're talking about? I appreciate your, your, your monologue, your...
I gave you the point about the charge.
Well, 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 no, you did.
What do you want? What do you want about the charge? Again?
At what point will we hear from the board, the benefits from the finances that this company is going to incur from these chargers? What are the benefits to Highland Falls taxpayer residents?
I think, Michael, you already made your point, so we can move on.
Yeah, 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 let's move on, let's move on, get up and answer.
Again, again, you don't want the answer?
No, get the board.
Oh, you don't want the answer?
Wait a minute.
You don't want the answer?
Wait a minute. The board is...
You're not answering, you're talking about...
Mike, it's not up to you to say...
Oh, I can give you the answer.
It's not up to you to say, well, go ahead.
No, no.
Go ahead, go ahead, you're done?
Yeah. Mr. Reddell probably gave the answer, so...
Okay, I don't give an answer, okay? So here's the answer, okay? We are the elected officials, not the attorney. This has been going on for months and months and months. You should be able to tell the people the answer as to why Green Point is not a good company. I saw it on email, it didn't make sense to me, okay? I can't give you a reason why she didn't think the contract was good enough, okay? It was good enough for the town, I looked at her questions, it was so, to me, it didn't make sense.
If it was good enough for the town, if it was good enough for the town, how come there was an article in the paper that they were charging, Charge Point, I mean, Green Point is getting $250,000, that the town didn't even know about? That's, that's a good company to go with? That's a good company to go with?
Well, that's why you didn't choose them, because they're not awful.
No, I'm asking you, I'm asking you, is that a good company to go with?
Okay, now, 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 we're back to, once ago, I'm not commenting on...
That's a good one, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're, you're, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question about these charging stations.
Yes, ma'am.
Regardless of like what it is that's coming back to the town from the usage, why were they brought in and it not being charged to the customer to begin? And you're saying that we're paying $1,000 approximately a month in the electrical usage? Why are we taking that cost and not the customer from the get-go?
Great, great question. The original reason why we got the chargers was to check a couple boxes, that we were going for a grant. Now, what was the grant amount for? Five, 10, or 15? Not exactly 100% sure, I can get that number for you, but basically, whatever the grant was coming in, was basically gonna cover us for like what we anticipated to be the cost. So now that we've looked at it, we've had it there for a while, we know that we have, definitely have to charge something now, which is, what this, what Mr. Ramus is trying to say is, is that why would I wanna get 10%? Why would I wanna be limited to 10%? The deal was bad. If I'm able to charge what I need to charge on that station, I wanna make as much as I possibly can to at least cover the cost, maybe make a few extra dollars to plan, whatever, do something, maybe I'll make, buy another bench or something, I don't know. But we wanna go for the best place to maximize what we could probably get, while not turning them off to using it, right? What's the point of putting there? I don't have an electric car, I don't, that's a whole other debate, but if we're, if it's there, you want them to use it. If you go to the chargers down at the town, where they have this exorbitant charge now, it's a $250,000 that was beautifully written in the newspaper, I don't know what they're getting usage-wise, so what's the point? So this plan that Mr. Ramus is coming up with doesn't limit us to 10%, which is another reason why, again, it's a bad deal. We're able to set a rate per kilowatt hour, like, Mr. Dunn can answer that question, I don't know what a kilowatt hour is, I'd have to read on, but my point is, is I'm associating with a gallon of gas. A gallon of gas is, again, it's down $88 a gallon, but I mean, if, if you're going by a gallon of gas or a kilowatt per hour, and there's this charge, I don't want 10% of that, I wanna get as much as I can. So to me, it was a bad deal, I don't wanna limit myself to 10%. Hope that answered your question.
I gotta, I gotta, anything else?
I'll get you the number for the grant.
That's fine on that now. I, I did have just another, um, question, I was hoping to get an update on the drainage issue at Center Street, maybe Justin can answer.
Yeah. Center Street, we have taken all the measurements, we've gone out, camera and clean the lines, and now it's in the design case, they're putting together the proper design, the flow rates, all that complicated math. And once they have that put together, that will be executed, and we're hoping to do it in a short period of time, because we gotta get the blacktop here.
Yes, okay.
Right, right now, we're putting together the design.
Okay, so that's what I had as a concern, okay. Were you actually able to find the end of the pipe?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to see where that is, if we can...
It's right where you thought it was.
Okay.
It is, it's just there's some small stones that fell from it, but we were able to kind of roll it down and find the exit. And we touched other things that weren't addressed.
Okay, and is the, I had spoke with John Jones early, actually it was last fall, and he said that it would be addressed in the spring, the milling of the road a little bit further back from those catch basins. When the blacktop was done previously several years ago, it was just pitched improperly. So it's actually pitched away from the catch basin.
Columns or center?
Center.
Yeah, we'll get to that. I believe we're doing...
Is that included in this?
School lane.
I don't think, I think, are we going from school lane or are we going up a little further to...
Going from around school lane to, to...
To Mount, to Mount, to somewhere in that ballpark. So when we do it, we are going to mill it out. We're going to be replacing, as you saw, at the one end, pretty extensive damage.
Yes.
But it does make sense to block top it and then make repairs to the drains. So we got to get that design replaced and then...
Okay, very good. And the, just one more thing about Center Street. While all of that is going on, are the sidewalks going to be addressed at the same time or no? Because I don't, I don't know if you guys have seen the condition of the sidewalks at Center Street. It just happens to be a high-traffic area for kids walking to school, and it's in really bad shape right now. There's a tire...
Is it the one section closest to Mount?
And, yes.
Tomorrow morning, I'll take a look at it and see if, see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll work back.
So, just a little bit of information. So, my name's Gary Louts. My wife and I live at 48th Row in Highland, in, uh, Row Park. There's been a disaster funds set up to help victims of the flood recover, so I was going to read a quick email that I have since I'm on, I'm on that committee. Orange County Legislature Lower Totell has asked us to set up and receive monetary donations for the victims of the July 9 disaster. Those funds are in an account entitled the Town of Highland Disaster Fund. Also, Town of Highland Supervisor Bob Litsi and Councilman King asked the Center of Highland Falls to receive donated funds also for the victims of July 9 flooding. Those monies will also go into the disaster fund account. The Center of Highland Falls is a 501(c)(3) organization located at 264 Main Street. To oversee the distribution of funds, the board of trustees, the center has decided to establish a three-person committee to review and request the site board membership of the funds. So I'm on that committee. We're setting up the procedures and the applications now. It's going to be up to a $400 grant that people can apply for. It's not much, but at least it could help out with some of the recovery efforts. We plan to go live with this by 15 September. You will see flyers at both the Town of Highland headquarters as well as the library. There'll be an online application form too, because we realize there are some people that have connectivity and devices to go ahead and submit via electronically and others that do not. My plan is to, is to come to every village meeting and every board meeting to help address some of the questions. Again, I'm on, I'm on a three-person committee. I can't give information on who gets the grants and who doesn't. We're going to base it, we think, based upon severity of, of what you've experienced, not on income, not on how many you have in your family. It's going to be based on severity of disaster. I'm also going to type up a, a quick email for the Town of Highland newspaper, which I've been asked to do. But I'll keep everybody here in the loop as well as at the Town of Highland too. Okay, any questions up front?
I have a question, so, $400 per household?
Yes, yes. Yes, $400 per household. It's, it's not a lot in the account, and if, and if you have the funds that you want to donate, you can do that as well. There'll be flyers, there'll be a flyer that's supposed to, that has instructions on how you can do that as well. Again, a $400 is not much. You can reapply as well, and subsequently, at least that's the thought process we're using. We don't know, we don't have, we haven't established what the, what the timeline is as far as what the deadline is to go ahead and submit the application, but we will go live on the 15th, so expect it. If there are any delays, we'll let you know. Like I said, I plan to be here on every village board meeting as well as the town meeting. So if you have any questions, just come see me, okay?
Thank you.
It's needed.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. Can anyone give us an update on any grants we've submitted this year?
I don't know if I am sure. I don't know. I know we applied for millions for water sewer. There was a third one. I mean, we've applied for millions of dollars worth of grants.
Is that anything we need additional support from, like, you know?
The, the, yeah, no. Sometimes support letters help, but in, in these particular ones, there was no, there were no support letters asked for. I do have another grant, New York Forward, which is a 4.5 million for Main Street. There, they're looking for support letters. But not these other ones that I think you're asking about, no?
Just, just anything. I know we have a lot of improvements that are needed and just make sure we're staying on top of it.
Yeah.
If there's any update, even if, you know, I know they haven't come out yet, but just anything we've submitted for.
We should probably put some on, grants that we've been working on.
Okay.
So we, we actually hired a company, we were paying $3,000 on, and this company, you know, looks at what the grants available are, and they write up the grants once per $3,000 on.
And I think it's unknown, right?
Yes.
It's like whatever we say, but...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But so far, we haven't got the one. Could we have them come in and kind of just give a little feel of what we've done so far?
I will at the next meeting. I'll bring the paperwork with me.
Or even the grant writer, just to give a little update?
I don't know about that, but I'll have, I'll have paperwork that, when the grant is submitted, what's the deadline, and the date we'll hear. So yes or no? She's asking, somebody... I, I heard, I don't know.
There's a, there's a simple way to that, perhaps.
So... Okay.
And then, I got another question.
Go ahead.
I want to see downtown flourish as much as everyone else does. So a couple of questions off of that, and I appreciate all the discourse we've had tonight on, you know, talking about downtown. Why aren't we on the phone to this developer every day, asking like, what are you doing? Like, what, are we having good attention from them or...
I think he is hearing from different people quite often. I can't tell you every day, but he's in Texas. I wish I could give his number out, but I don't think I should. I don't think he'd approve of that, so I need to respect that. But you heard Melanie talk to him, I know I talk to him, I know other people are talking to him. Getting different answers, you heard that tonight too. So I, I, I don't know. I don't, I, I don't know. I know what he, I know what he told me. It was real simple.
I just want to make sure we're, we're constantly in communication.
Yeah.
To encourage him.
It's money, it's probably a money thing, you know?
And, and going off that, another direction, what are we doing to make it tougher for these people who own buildings downtown to make them have some sort of standard upkeep? To, to get developers and people who want to open businesses in the building they currently have? What, what are we doing about that?
My personal opinion, the, what you're exactly talking about is maybe upkeep, upkeep, upkeep on certain buildings to make them look nicer. It's a direct function of a consolidated office of the building department. One of the arms of the building department from the town is code enforcement. Not to take away from the folks that work in there, because they're, the town is not giving them enough resources to do their, to manage that, that office properly. Because as, as condensed as we are, even though it's, I've heard a half a mile, three-quarters of a mile, whatever it is, because we cut 15 businesses out when we, when we close the gap from the gate to mountain. But code enforcement, its direct responsibility is to make sure that the village codes and the town codes are being followed. Whether it's, uh, your trash cans are out too late, Mr. Phillips likes to bring out, whether it's paper in your windows from your business and you're in the process of changing businesses over or cleaning up inside to create a new business, whatever it is. There is certain codes that need to be followed. And unfortunately, the town is overwhelmed in that office with building, building permits, going through the normal running of that office. There's one and a half people down there. There's a, there's a, Phil Hannah-Walt, who does a great job and tries to keep up as best, best as possible. And then I believe there's a part-time secretary, she may be full-time, I don't know that. But that's that office, along with the, an engineering firm that does not live in town, that does not see, you know, Main Street every day, and they handle building, building permits here and there as they come in to assist them. But you really need somebody eyes on the, on the ground, and so that they can see what we see. Whether it's going to get a sandwich, whether it's taking a ride down Main Street, but it's a, it's a constant thing that we constantly bring up, and it's a consolidated service. And I agree with you, and I have no problem going to a town board meeting and bringing it up. But it has to do with just getting financial resources for town. When we pay taxes, as village residents, we pay town taxes to that department. And they need to allocate more resources to that department, in my opinion.
I would love it if, if you guys all would come and advocate that, or whatever that discussion.
Okay, so can I, I'm the building department liaison, so I cannot... Before, I was a building department liaison. Mr. DeSala was the building department liaison. So we've both been liaisons for the town, consolidated town building department. Okay, so I'll explain this to you. I agree with you. I think a lot of those buildings need, need to improve the way they look. Some of the buildings, the walls are falling now, right? So, but there's a process. So the building department, let me explain. The code enforcer is not the police, okay? All he can do is issue a violation, a notice of violation, wait. If it doesn't get corrected, issue another notice of violation, wait. Doesn't get corrected, issue a third notice of violation, once, right? Okay. And then whoever owns the building can actually lawyer up and say, I'm not paying that $150 fine. I'm not going to correct it. And I'll give you a prime example of that, right? And then it goes to court. So when it goes to court, now it's in somebody else's hands. It's not the code enforcer who's going to say, you need to pay the village this and this or spend $20,000 to fix your law, okay? It becomes a series of legal processes. I'll give you a prime example. The Marina down in Station Hill Road, I don't know if anybody's been down there, right? That is a residential zone. There's a business there. It's called an RV park. He advertises online. He, he makes a lot of money getting RVs to actually park there for months.
That's the thing.
Exactly. It's not supposed to be there. For the past seven years, the building department, from one building inspector to another building inspector, to another building inspector, has issued him multiple, multiple notices of violations, cease and desist letters, stop operating a business. That's a zone presidential. By the way, you don't even have the right facilities to operate a business. Lawyer up. Just went in the court system for seven years. We just, we just finally got there, okay? On a health violation. Health violation, you don't have this, this. So the details of this, this, I cannot tell you, right? But what I'm telling you is it takes years to get that done. There's a process, and the code enforcer is not a policeman. All he does is he has to follow the rules until it goes to the courts, until it becomes a legal issue, and he pays for when it goes to court. So that's not free. Taxers have to pay for that, okay? So here's the other thing. You make it sound easy, right? Oh, I agree with you, it's the town, the town did this, it's a consolidated effort, they are just underpowered. 50% of the 1,100 homes here in the village are absent landlords, okay? Absent landlords. They just rent 50% of those 1,100 houses. If you are a landlord, you have to go to the building department and actually register as a landlord, right? So there should be at least 500 landlord registration forms in the building department, right? There's three of us here on this board who own multiple properties in the village. Do you know how many people have registered their homes as landlords? One. Me and my husband, our family. We're the only people in the village who have registered our homes, or some of our homes, as rentals. People on the board haven't registered. They're not even following the rules. So, but...
Melanie, I don't... I only own one home.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Gary, I, I, that's a second one.
I only own one.
I own one home, raise your hand.
Two single-family homes with double blind.
Oh, so Jen's the only one, I'm sorry.
No, Gary and I both own two single-family homes with double blind. It's for multifamily.
Go ahead, Charlie.
We have a multifamily, and I'm not sure if we have registered, but we paid for inspections every year, and I'm sure there is a record of our apartments.
You have a multi...
Family homes.
Family dwelling.
Yeah.
Yeah, not for single-family homes, right?
Yeah, yeah, no, it has to be a multifamily body. And you're a landlord by the home...
In the interest of finding...
You don't mention I have a registered...
...of revenue. I hesitate to bring this up because it was the subject that caused my brain bleed on the village board. There are different parcels, and I suspect some of them are owned by the guy up there that aren't being taxed at their full values. The other thing is 32 acres of land on the river were taken off the tax rolls completely by Cine Hudson. To do that, they have got to have it open to the public. There is not a single sign. There's no welcoming gesture that that is even a passive recreational park. So why are we not getting payments in lieu of taxes?
Charlie, Charlie, let me just answer that last part. There is a Cine Hudson committee, and the storm stopped us from moving forward, but today, and I had to email some Cine Hudson, they want me to resurrect it again and get back. They're making a trail down there. We're going to be part of it. There's going to be signage up by the main road, by the grand unit. There's going to, we're, we're still discussing parking. There's been studies down there, there's writ, extremely rare, unheard of,
Practice.
Flowers, plants, bugs, that you don't see anywhere else in the world. It's, it's amazing. There was a guy at a company that spent two full nights, they slept in a tent down there because of a moth, a stung by a moth. I'm, well, I'm just down there. You know, it's good stuff for interpretation. There'll be an interpretation trail, kids can go down there with supervision, and it'll, it'll be good. But that is coming, that one.
Where is the opening going to be, so you know how to get?
Well, the opening is, it's a, uh, uh, it can only be in a couple of places. It either has to be down by the village garage, could be by, could be somewhere by Paragon Hall, but then we have to deal with Rick Manicosi, because he owns that. And then there's Regina Rook. So we're trying to, and, and I don't want to actually, I don't, I'm a...
Until that happens, it should be taxed, that's...
Yeah, okay, we're on it. We're on it, okay. Sir? We can't hear you, sir.
Charlie, I've just stalled my approach down on Barbara Road.
Yes.
And it's, I see nothing in the inventory of the projects that are being addressed. And that, that road, while it's not huge, it's a village road. And it's at the rear of two of our properties, it gives access to their property. And there's a village sewer line that traverses that road. And the storm washed out major sections of it. So one of the plans to...
Sir, you had called me, you had called me, I think, you called me, not emailed, correct? And each one of these, each one of these folders is, this is all about damage to walls. I got drains. This is roads, and right there, Barbara Road, washed out. So it's here, we have to look at it, and, you know, it was not a functioning road. It was a paper road, they called.
Well, they made that a paper road on the record, but we have used it to access the properties north of us, use it regularly, but probably leaving it, with the dumpster down at the back of one of those properties, or using it as a, a nutrition area.
Sir, I have it right here, so we're, we're looking at it.
Correct. But, but my concern was, was that addressed as part of the federal or state project?
Yeah, that, 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 that's who all of these are. This is FEMA projects.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we've got something.
Yeah, I got, I got it. I got it down, let's see where I can take it. Okay, Justin, we've talked about this road.
We've talked about it.
Yeah.
I have to report that to my manager. We did have FEMA there, there's a road liaison, and I believe that that was our estimated number of damages. But at this point, until we get the money, we have to wait for answers on something until the fed requires a check.
But down to that, how many months do we have, and that's it right now?
So, and, and our estimated damage is over 38 now, so it's not forgotten. And it does remind me of it all the time. We just, until we have that money at hand, I can't, I can't promise you anything.
And, and sir, and everyone else, this week, last week started discussions with FEMA. And I, I was going to do this after everyone was done, but it fits this. So last Thursday, Justin, Todd, our engineer, Justin works for the engineering firm, Jim DeSala was there, we had a teleconference with, with, for an hour and a half with FEMA. It was a little long. From that, um, we talked about, we discussed the damage inventory that we had, and I reminded them very strongly, and they understood that six months from now, eight months from now, we're going to find something that we didn't find today that you could actually relate to the storm. So they, they realized that too. So damage inventory, identify relevant documentation needed to support the damage. Sometimes that might mean a D, a, a survey, schedule site inspections and develop a program delivery plan. So that's what we talked about on the phone. And then this Thursday, we have another meeting here with FEMA. And then all next week, FEMA will be here and we'll be taking them to as many sites as they want to go and see. So it start, huh?
You know, if they don't want to see it.
Yeah, it start, it's, it's starting to happen. Yeah, it's start, it's starting to happen. Of course, I have this email saying, I'll just read the first line to you. The disaster relief fund is approaching exhaustion. I don't really care. I care about here. And I'm sure it is with all, everything that's going on everywhere. But the good news with that comment, and there was a whole paragraph here, is that they're running, FEMA runs out of their money at the end of this month. As, as, as...
Their normal budget.
As their normal budget year. And so, we're in the October money, the new, the new money.
Lots more money.
Huh?
Lots more money.
So, that's, I was going to say that in a little bit, but that's where we are with FEMA. It's finally starting to happen. It takes time, I know. And that was why we thought we should borrow money. I call it seed money, that we could start some of these improvements, like Brown's Hill, all the way down, like Rose Drive, like a couple of other places. That's water, that's why there was a water bonding. That's why there was a wastewater bonding. We, some of these things have to be done now, all right? And we don't have five million sitting in a kitty. I'm not sure what a kitty is, but kitty, I heard that. So, so, so that was why we're borrowing this money, to get things going.
Well, I can tell you, the worst part of...
I'm not doubting what you're telling, but I'm telling you that there's certain ones that are owned by the TRT, there's certain ones that are owned by the... And there's certain ones that were privately owned, so that maybe they can make their money to go fill it or whatever. Can I ask you, again, if you see me, that I can remember him? There's what I'll do, I'll call you from there here. Is you're available? I'd love for you, the more information I can get.
He has information that, he has information, I don't.
Yeah, but not without him. You know enough about him, when you come really into FEMA, he's also...
Anything else?
Joe, can I ask, now FEMA meetings, I mean, I haven't heard of any meetings. Is it because it's only you and Todd and Mr. DeSavo allow people to be...
Jim's on that, all of them either. But when he stops by Village Troy, tell him about these meetings. We can talk after.
Yeah, can you make the whole board available?
I'm not sure that, you know, you know the rules on that. They're not my rules, they're...
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. I will find out.
So, the meetings are with you and the engineers and whoever else you invite? But not necessarily the whole group? I could see why you're walking in.
Why I don't walk in? I didn't hear you.
I could see why you're walking in.
I'm going to address that. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Just a question with respect to the Village of Holland Falls Sewer Treatment. Now, there was a thirty-six inch line with it that was play line and was blown apart. And so, the sewer treatment plant was whatever came down the street, right?
You were in the storm meeting?
Engineer was driving that door. And that line repairs, and then the sewer treatment plant running down.
Yeah, that line was repaired the same week that it was...
Yeah, like a day and a half after the storm.
Was there a field wiping that went down the road? Did they replace the field wiping?
Yeah, it was replaced a lot down there.
Okay.
There was a twelve-foot, it was a twelve-foot.
Go ahead.
Well, that was clear.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to backtrack quickly to the discussion about the condition of the town and about the regular property maintenance. And it's really not only the businesses. The whole village is looking quite shaggy. And I'm, I'm aware that the process is quite extensive in order from, from starting at issuing a violation to actually solving the problem. Is there anything that could be done or could be changed or amended to adjust that process at all?
Okay, this question came up not very long ago, a couple of weeks, whatever. And I, I thought maybe I should ask the attorneys, so anybody who could streamline it. Now, when Mrs. Guerrero talked about the process, when you're talking, when, I will agree with her on the RV part, for which they've been all told to get out, and they're still all down there. The process does take, soon as you start getting into court, it starts taking longer. But property maintenance, normal property maintenance, someone has overgrown grass, someone has whatever, those are easy. They're a little time consuming, but the paperwork is less. You send them a notice, the building department sends them a notice of what they have to correct. It gives them ten or twenty days to correct it. It says you can come to the village board and ask for an extension. But it's, then it's done. If it's not done by the date, the town building department hires a contractor to go in there, let's say it's a grass issue.
Yeah.
Cut the grass, and then the bill gets sent to the property owner. He doesn't pay, it goes onto his taxes. So, we will not lose the money. So, so it's a little, it's a little easier when it's property maintenance. But listen, I, it, it, I didn't know if this was going to come today, but today Phil Hanawal came to my office, and he wanted to talk about a couple of things. And I tell you, I told him this. I said, Phil, because of the storm, flood, I've been laying back a little bit because he is completely overwhelmed, okay? He is great. He is a good employee. He knows his job, and he's overwhelmed. Like, that's an understatement. So, I stayed away from giving him things that I see, you know? And I'm just going to throw out a couple. That purple house on Mountain Avenue that we've been complaining about for how many years? You actually, it's kind of good news in a stupid kind of way. You can't even see the house now. The weeds are so hot.
Right. So, how does that happen?
I, he has, I don't know, ma'am. You know, I'm not going to say you should go to the building department, because I'm not going to do that. But, but I know that guy's gotten notices. And I know a couple of times we had, we paid, had it done, we got the money back.
Has someone lived, actually lived there? I don't understand.
Well, there's a guy in it. Believe it or not. And I always say, you can tell someone's house on the inside by the way the outside looks. So, you go figure on that one, okay? When was the last time anyone in this room drove down Main Street from Thayer Gate to Mountain Avenue?
Recently.
And saw a proprietor or an employee washing their windows? Have you ever seen that? No. Go look at some of the windows you can't even see in. Okay, that, that should, that's good business to begin with. Now, now, let me just do a couple more things. Dyros Drugstore, Lily's of the Valley's Flare's. What a disgrace. What a disgrace. First of all, he had paper up on the window. Code says no paper, no funny papers, newspapers, brown paper. He's supposed to have the niche blinds or curtains. What a disgrace. What a disgrace. One more. Look next, this is, this is more than the one I'm going to tell you. Look next between the village hall and Benny Havens. I think a long time ago, for people that are a little bit old like me, the video place was in there, okay? Now, a West Point contractor rents. That's okay, I have a property for that. There are a half a dozen of them on Main Street. All I'm asking you to do, and you'll see what I'm talking about, tomorrow, not when it's dark, tomorrow, drive by. You don't have to get out of your car, just drive by and look at the windows. And I'm not talking about dirt. Yes, dirt, you can write your name in it. There's boxes this way, that way. I mean, make it nice. It doesn't, you go to the dollar store and make that window nice. Seriously. I don't know, when was the last time you saw a proprietor sweep his sidewalk? When was the last time? When was the last time you saw someone approve? Okay, I don't know. I don't know what the problem is. I don't know what the problem is. But the town, I tell people, the building department, the problem is the town board. And I know they're going to come after me. I don't care at this point in my life. Okay, I'm not young, it doesn't matter to me anymore. But it's the town board needs to hire. I told Phil today, the least they should do is hire a part-timer. And actually, they should hire a part-timer and devote that guy, that man, that woman, should devote their all, the entire time to the village. To the village. That's my opinion.
Isn't the, isn't the building department a shared?
No, it's not shared, it's consolidated. I can't go down there and tell the building, as mayor, I can't go down there and say, Phil, by no time I want you to address this. I can't do that. I can ask them, but it's town one. That's the problem. You, you lose authority. I wouldn't have this town, this village looking like this. It's terrible. And I only, I only picked out four on Main Street. Go to Fort Putnam Street. Any of you know where I live? The worst property in the Village of Holland Falls is sitting next to my property. The worst. Well, I do. The worst.
That's that, ma'am. So, my question then is, is what, is there anything else that we can do about it? I mean, if we were to form like an HOA or something with the village, is that...
I know what you're talking about. An HOA?
Homeowners Association? HOA? A homeowners association?
Yeah, I didn't hear what you said. Can you start the part, the first part again?
So, with this problem of not being able to get where we need to from the village standpoint through the building department, is there something else that we can do in the way of maybe forming like an HOA for the village? Is...
Usually, oh, usually an HOA is a sort of like a condominium, you know, development...
We're very small though, I, just a thought.
So, you know what we should do? We should hire a part-time code enforcement officer for the Village of Holland Falls. That's what we should do. Then you won't see these things.
The issue is not giving notices. The issue is, the issue is enforcing the rules, right? He is not a policeman. All he can do is issue the violation notices over and over. And you, nobody, as citizens in the community, you can come and say, listen, my neighbor has trashed the home and, you know, it's garbage. I'm complaining about my neighbor. You can do that. And then he will issue a notice of violation to that neighbor and make him, and I agree with Joe, you know? Grass cutting, if they don't, if they do it, that, that's right. Those are actually very...
Even still though, I mean, you can't walk down the street and not be getting, hit in the face with an overgrown bush or a tree, or stepping over a grass patch in the sidewalks.
Report that. They don't notice a violation.
The actual, the actual title of the position is code enforcement. They, that, that person can most certainly enforce the code. Now, what does that mean? It's code enforcement, it's not a criminal act. They can't go banging on your door and handcuff you. There's a process. But for property maintenance, which is mostly what I think we're talking about, because that's what you'd usually see, it's the visual, right? It's the visual. Property maintenance, we streamlined that years ago. I want to say probably a decade ago.
I know, Dan.
And we, and we fast-tracked it. Where, where things used to take two, three, six months, we cut that, the times in half, almost a third. So, he has the laws on the books. And I think Phil actually helped us. He wasn't, I don't know if he was working down there, but I want to think that Phil was a part of it somehow. And maybe I'm off on the time train, but it's been well over six years. So, he has the tools. It's just that, like the mayor said, he's overwhelmed. He was overwhelmed before the storm. And now, and now it's, he needs more resources there. It comes from the A Fund, the town, that, that department is paid by the A Fund. The town has two main funds, A and B. A is everyone, village residents, Fort Montgomery residents. That department is paid by the A Fund, which village taxpayers pay for.
Joe, how much is break-in on that approximately too? And it's based on assessed value?
Yeah, maybe like, I mean, like...
Fifty-eight?
Fifty, fifty-five, forty-five.
So, the village residents pay, you are in that fund, and the town residents do, for those consolidated entities, just so you all know. We can go into it a little deeper, but it's just something that you should be aware of.
You had your hand up.
Yeah, I just say, I'm, I'm really passionate about this, and I know you guys are too. And I will say, it definitely has sounded like some of y'all have said, you know, the town, it's the town, it's the town, but this is the village. You guys are the village. So, I need to see all of you advocate for us, you know, because it doesn't make sense that it was back and forth.
I agree.
Please, I want to see at the meetings, I want to hear, like, they're making communication with the town. I mean, this is a circle that's been going on for years, and it's getting worse. We've lost two great businesses recently. We need to do something. We're just, we're just sitting, and we're saying, oh, you guys are this person. And they say, oh, go back to them, and it's just, we're stuck. I want you to advocate for us.
I'm not personally sending you anywhere. This, this conversation that we're having here happens all the time. Whether it's I text Phil, or I see him, or I bump into him on the street, or I go down there, or it's, it's constant. It might not be formally at a meeting, but I speak to council members all the time. We all do.
And with Phil, like, very overwhelmed. The sad thing is, like, trusty ground brought up and the rest of it. Half of these people here don't even live in the village. Half of them are all illegal Airbnb's. Two houses over from me on Church Street, they got those newspaper flyers in the guy's driveway, and he's probably getting, I don't know, $2,500 every time he rents out the place an Airbnb. But no one gets up the trash can, nobody picks up the papers. The sad thing is that these people who are absentee landlords and have their Airbnbs, which are illegal or illegal, whatever you want to call it, they just don't give a crap. And that's the sad thing about it. And we all suffer, you know, taxpayers or rent or whatever, people just don't care. As long as they get their money, they don't care. Now, there's a lot of people that rent places, that own places, that take care of the property for years before I own, no matter where I live. I took care of my property big time. It didn't make a difference because I didn't want to go by the slot. A lot of these people don't care. They don't care. And we all suffer. So, we go down, and we, we do mention to Phil everything. And like Joe said, and I've brought it plenty of times too, that the mayor said that we do need our own code enforcement officer. So, that money revenue comes back into the Village of Holland Falls, that we can take it, and then it'll probably take off some of the burden off of Mr. Hanawal down. That's the thing about it. We do reach out to the guys, but without the help that he's not going to get down there, we're all going to suffer. This whole village is going to suffer.
We're going to say stop, we'll do something.
Yes.
I've been to the, the town meetings, and I asked for more code enforcement. And I was kind of yelled at, and told that the police department in Holland Falls can do some of the stuff. Like, if you leave your garbage cans out all week, the police can issue a ticket. And, and, you know, I kind of, you know, wonder, what, what can they do? And can the village board also start giving some police statistics about what's going on? Last police report that we've had from a board member was Brian Howard, and that was the last administration. You know, we, we're not hearing anything. And if the police could, you know, issue tickets, it'll either go to the court, I don't know, does it go to the court? Someone's going to have to come in. I went to the village board meeting because of the farm animals. Someone's raising chickens in the North End. And somehow, they're gone.
Yeah, those roosters, everything, yeah, they're gone.
Well, luckily, there was no roosters.
Well, there was roosters. Mary Jean could tell you. They were, yeah.
You heard them, you heard them too?
Roosters and chickens, yep, yep.
Anything else?
Perhaps you're still doing the comprehensive plan, and take all this information to make caveat in that plan, and maybe assign, remember, please, whatever, start it, you know, one thing. Start that big one a while, and start the...
That's true. Yes.
I think, I commend the village board at sprucing up Main Street and, you know, for the other villagers who were passionate about it. I think a great example would be the Spruce Village Hall. And I think cleaning up the windows there, a fresh color of paint, nice, fresh... You know, I think cleaning up the windows there, a fresh coat of paint, nice, uh, fresh flag out front. And that cardboard box that's on the call box needs to be replaced in the sidewalks. I mean, that would be a great thing, maybe contagious to the rest of Main Street if our village hall was, uh, nice and sparkly and, uh, cleaned up.
So the flags are always replaced when they're needed. I know it needs paint, I actually would like to take the paint off, but either way, it's gonna be, because either way we go, it's gonna be a lot of money. Uh, the windows are cleaned by our cleaner. He says it's about a cover box.
It's like a call box in front of the police station, it's like a broken cardboard box hanging off there.
That's the cover of the, uh...
Two drop boxes.
That's the cover of the...
I mean, it's just, just those kind of details.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
You can walk around and, you know, think of some things on your own.
Yeah, likely, like, no?
Uh, okay, so, since we were on the topic of the building department, I'm gonna give your report. And I agree with you, I think if we, the village, if they can help enforce the rules, that, you know, we can issue all the violations we want. I'm not defending, uh, you know, the, the ugly houses or the dirty windows. I agree, I think, if, if anything, we, we, everybody have been trying to make ugly buildings look beautiful in the village. So I agree with you. And I think we need help, the building department does need help enforcing the rules. I know that that's his name, code enforcement, but he's not a policeman. He can't like, you know, issue a ticket and make you pay right there and handcuff you, or make you pick up the dog poo when he sees the dog. He just says you can't do that, okay? Here's a violation. And they can rip it in front of his face and walk away, okay? But I agree, I wish that with the village, maybe what we can talk about is how we can make the fines steeper, okay? Steeper. You do a violation, it's not gonna be a hundred dollars, it's not gonna be fifty dollars, it's not gonna be a hundred fifty, it's gonna be a lot more. Okay, so, okay, we can talk about that. I agree. Okay, there's something that needs to be done. That, that Main Street looks awful. Empty, abandoned buildings, no businesses. Uh, but for the building department report, there were thirty-one permit applications received, and, uh, all of them were granted except for three. As a reminder, uh, all flood-related application fees have been waived by the supervisor. There were twenty-nine certificates of compliance that were issued, and fifty-eight building permit inspections done by the code enforcer. Uh, there were four zoning variance applications received. All four is gonna go for a public meeting at the next zoning board meetings. So let me talk about, uh, Main Street, investors. And Ed, I cannot agree with you more, okay? I am very, very frustrated that nothing is happening on that lot, okay? Because if anything, you know, when we invested in downtown, we just wanted to be a booming downtown. There's no reason why there are million visitors coming to West Point, and we're not getting any money as a village from those visitors, because there's nowhere for them to stop. They just bypass us, right? But there's still businesses on Main Street, okay? But there have been investors from West Point and outside of West Point who have approached me and are interested in revitalizing Main Street. They are, they're buying properties, right? But, you know, what I would tell you is that Main Street didn't look like that overnight. It's years. It took years to get there. Decades, okay? And it got there because of poor zoning laws and poor planning. By us, our leaders, okay? Our zoning laws are so archaic. You need twenty-five hundred square foot of land to have one dwelling. I'll give you an example. My property has six thousand square foot of land, right? And I can put five thousand, I can, I can only put two apartments, which is what we did. The only building on Main Street that conforms to that zoning rule is our building, my building. Any other building on that, you can, how can you make money if you're a businessman? The properties are selling for a million dollar each. So you're gonna knock down a million dollar building, and then you're gonna build, and then how do you make money renting out two apartments and a storefront? How do you recoup your money, right? So I get it, and Ed, I agree with you. You know, I've called him, I'm like, what are we gonna do? The answer is no money. It's equivalent to what he said to you, Joe. He's saying that he's not making money at the Thera Hotel. How can he move forward for another prospect when there's no money at the Thera? I got it, okay? So, you know, this parking, if you want Main Street to look like a giant parking lot, that's what you're gonna get with the kind of zoning rules that we have right now, okay? Look at the parking lot. USAA has a thirteen, fourteen parking lots. Bosch's over there by Chipotle has more than that parking lot. McDonald's across the street is half parking lot. The visitor center is almost all parking lot, okay? All, both sides of Main Street are parking spaces. And now we're saying, if you're gonna build, you need a parking space per residential. One and a half, two parking spaces per dwelling. Entire Main Street is gonna look like a parking lot. So really, I think Ed is right. This is the time to really look at this comprehensive, uh, this master plan that we're putting together. And we have to get these investors in here, because our tax burden, we need help with our tax burden, okay? We need businesses in here, we need tourists spending money in here, we need more residents, we need denser properties on that first quarter, half mile of Main Street. We just need help. Otherwise, all of you are gonna see your taxes go up, and there are no businesses helping us. So making West Point where these business owners are enemy is really not helpful. It doesn't help to make a demon on stage, okay? We need to work with them, we really do.
Well, I'm sure we'll be working with the Association of Graduates, because they're buying our property. And I know, and I know other military people that are buying our property, so sooner or later, they're gonna appear.
Let's, let's get them in here, all right?
Well, let's get them in here, yeah, let's get the ones in here that are gonna do something.
I tell you, it's money. I, I wish I could, yeah, I could tell you. Even our building, it costs us a million dollars to actually just make it the way it is, and it's, it's very, very expensive, okay? So the center of Highland Falls, uh, for Ann Molina, Molina, she continues to have a lot of daily activities at the center, uh, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays. Really, there's an activity every single day at the center. Just go on our website, I know it's getting late, so I'm not gonna mention all of that. But I do wanna thank, lastly, Aaron Pock and Sally Gorse, Sally was just here. You know, even after the flood, they're still out there, uh, they're actually giving the people who are displaced, some of them are in Newport now, food, water, because a lot of them don't have a way to get around, to get groceries. So Sally Gorse, Aaron Pock, thank you very much for getting them supplies and delivering people who are, to people who are still displaced. And I also thank Bob Leacy, okay, because he allows Aaron to actually do all of that, as part of his new job as a rent, rent guy.
Okay. Um, so real quick, uh, I wish, Charlie was still here, because I will be attending a innovative solution trail design. I know, you were talking about the trail designs that are going on down there. And that is on September, I'll pass it over. I'll bring down information that you showed up.
Yeah.
The other thing is, there is money out there. I work for it, but there's a lot of money out there.
Really?
I tried to bring money into the village, uh, or at least concepts and designs for the Yale property eight, nine years ago. And what I was told by, I don't think anybody on this board was on this board at that point in time, that they didn't wanna see that kind of development on the Yale property. They only wanted to see twelve houses down there. Well, that's not what the code allowed down there. The code allowed for, my goodness, it was probably forty-eight houses designed, plus multifamily units and a conference center. That all could've been accomplished, but ours, that baby didn't want it to happen. And that's unfortunate. And now we lost it to see the customer. But there is money out there. So I am all for working with the code. Uh, I just know what it's like for parking, and there's gotta be some give and take. If we're gonna lower the density size, we need to think about some type of parking that will be required. Because without places for people to park, to park all over Main Street, then nobody's gonna be able to clean Main Street in the morning. And we're gonna just have, we're gonna create a no problem service. So those are things that we need to think about, this whole board needs to think about when we throw this, uh, comprehensive plan out to y'all to review after we get...
Jim, uh, Kirk?
Yes. Just a update, uh, quickly, Bob Meadow is still full, uh, thank God for that. Uh, the plant's producing about five hundred and forty thousand gallons per day. Back in eight seventeen, uh, two repaired, uh, two inch worming, an old Seabrook was repaired. And then, uh, we have a, uh, free leak detection, uh, company that comes out from the county. And, uh, we had a report, we checked on, uh, four leaks that were found, which were considered major. Uh, Jack is locating them for repair, and we should be having them done by, by middle of next week or by the end of next week. Um, and one of them were heightened, uh, but I just, uh, that's just an update there. And, uh, last, I just wanna say, you know, to, uh, Jack Sibley, thank you for the twenty-eight years of service, that he's done for the food. Uh, I've known him for a very long time. He, uh, always answered my phone calls when, uh, when I called. I'm like, you know, I'm not looking, uh, you know, but I just wanted to say, man, thank you, and, uh, wishing the best of luck in the future. So that's all I have to thank.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, just to, you know, we talked a lot about tonight, about zoning and, and all these different things. And I, I love some of the questions we got from the audience, but just everybody keep in mind that, you know, for a couple of businesses on Main Street right now, you know, we had a couple, you know, we had a long time, what I would call anchor stores. You know, one retired after fifty years, after sixty-three years. Another, another shop, a well-known restaurant, you know, that, uh, the family decided to not, reopen. So, um, not barring those two establishments, um, you can't just say that the reason why Main Street from the gate to Mountain or the, uh, the gate to Nine W is solely a zoning issue, and that's why it is the way it is. Uh, there have been plenty of businesses that have come and gone. Where the Hacienda Restaurant is now, there used to be a Thai restaurant, Joseph's. I don't remember it, I was too young. I've heard the reference several times. My great-grandparents had a restaurant on this side of town. There was a Five and Ten. There was a clothes shop, Mr. Schwartz's Clothes Shop. There was a general store run by Mr. Dever. Like, it's changed. The, the model of the small community has changed, because of box stores or whatever. But also for us, we have the biggest competition very close by. Whether it's delivering food from the Thera Hotel, whether it's, we have a Dunkin' Donuts, and then there's a Starbucks, we have a McDonald's, there's a Burger King, if you have a burrito guy, there's a Taco Bell. If we have the Floris, there's a Floris, there's a barber shop, we have a few barber shops. Uh, there's a barber shop, there's a dry cleaner, there's, the dry cleaner is the thing. There's a clothes shop, there's a grocery store, like, it's very difficult for us as a community. Very difficult. So we have to be able to do what we can do. It's not all related to zoning. Businesses come and go. We're gonna have new ones buy the properties that are here, you can't buy, you cannot. You try to sell a house downtown and see how fast it goes. Houses are getting bought in weeks, maybe a month. And some people on the board are on their fourth property. So you're investing your money here for something. I'm not saying we don't have work to do, we have work to do. And we're gonna talk about the twenty-five hundred square foot thing. You're exempt from parking with the twenty-five hundred. Exempt. Okay, you gotta read the code. But if you make it smaller, we have to address the parking. That's all we're saying. No one's saying it's all parking lots. And let's talk about Rick Manicosi for a second. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be done away. Let's talk about Rick Manicosi for a second, and parking. Rick Manicosi, in my opinion, sold us a fill of goods. Because he came to a board meeting. We negotiated a deal with him for additional parking, for leased spots. He had no problem with parking. He went through the planning board, and they, they did everything in their arsenal to try to make it work for him. Then he came to the village board. We gave him sections of property on Old, on Station Hill Road where he could park cars. We were gonna line it, we were gonna do whatever we could because of this huge investment. In fact, some of the people in this room, uh, took us to task for not moving fast enough. And look where we are now. We have an investor that buys buildings, like the Key Bank Building. Don't know what they bought it for, but they requested the tax surcharge to go down every time so that they don't have to pay property taxes. If we weren't gonna have the funds to build on that site, which, which Mr. Dunn brought up regarding, there's no, there's no, there's no equipment or there's no, uh, materials, nothing, then why was he, why did he not get that? Why couldn't the structure be there? I know it was unsightly, but the tax money was different. Went to the school, went to the town, went to the village. No, it's tore down now, and now it's being charged as raw land, regular just piece property, a fraction of what it used to be. So, you, you know, like, we, we have taken some steps, and sometimes we try to, we go too quickly, and we try to make people who are coming here with investors, but the investors are coming. They are purchasing homes, they are purchasing businesses. And we do have to tweak the code. Everybody on the board agrees we have to tweak the code. But you can't just jump in feet first and then say, oh, it'll just figure itself out. It doesn't always work that way. And I, in fact, there's some people in this room that talk about a parking garage, that we needed a parking garage at one point. So, you know, we have too much parking, and we don't have enough parking. So we are working on it. It's government, it does take a long time, and I'll never send you to another board to get results. If I can't fix it here, I'll go talk to somebody, one hundred percent. But give it some time, we just had a massive, massive, massive flood, and a couple of businesses that are what I consider anchor businesses, that when other businesses closed, that were still here, you know, extending within circumstances, that they're not open right now. But, you know, give it some time, let's, you know, get through some things, we have to tweak the code. We'll get there, be positive. We gotta clean up some properties, I agree with that. We gotta take some water lines, I agree with that too. We'll get there. We'll get there.
Thank you, Jim. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion by Dr. C. Ramison, second by Gary Phillips, all in favor?
Yes.